In the absence of our mayor, of course, let me welcome each of you to this meeting today. Isn't it good to be alive today?
Yeah.
Isn't it good to be in the city of Columbia?
Yes.
Come on, we can do it better than that, right? Thank you all so very, very much. If we could, let us all stand and repeat the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the law, the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation, united states, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask Mr. Howard Duval if he would lead us in our invocation. Mr. Duval.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for this beautiful day that you have in the city of Columbia. We ask you to watch over and protect those that are in disaster zones such as Puerto Rico, Florida, South Carolina, North Carolina, and other places. Give them protection from the winds and the rains and make them whole again. We ask you to be with this body today to help us make wise decisions for this capital city and to be under your supervision always. For West, in your name I'm here.
Amen.
Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, will...
Yes, ma'am.
Do you mind if we call the roll, sir?
I'm sorry, Ms. Wilson.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, let's do that first.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir.
All right, you're doing good. Mr. Taylor, Ms. Herbert, Dr. Bustles, Mr. Brennan...
Present.
Mr. McDowell...
Yes.
Mr. Duval...
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman. Thank you.
Thank you. You have the agenda before you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Um, question.
Yes, sir.
For item number 23 until the mayor's...
I think the clerk is going... Would you make that reference?
Well...
Okay. Just for the record, though, if we would, just for the record.
Yes, sir, we'll definitely hold item number 23 until Mayor Rickaman's arrival. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, it's before you. There has been moved and seconded that we adopt the agenda. Are there questions?
Yes, sir, I heard the motion by Dr. Bustles. Thank you. Mr. Taylor seconded. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Taylor, Ms. Herbert...
Aye.
Dr. Bustles...
Yes.
Mr. Brennan...
Yes.
Mr. McDowell...
Yes.
Mr. Duval...
Aye.
Thank you.
This is a time for those of you who have the agenda before you. If there is input you'd like to reference that's on the agenda, on the agenda today, if there's any public input reference in the agenda. All right, seeing none. All right, is there a motion then to approve the minutes from our last council meeting?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mr. Taylor...
Aye.
Ms. Herbert...
Aye.
Dr. Bustles...
Aye.
Mr. Brennan...
Yes.
Mr. McDowell...
Yes.
Mr. Duval...
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, I'll do the presentations at this point. Item number two is the National Hispanic Heritage Month Proclamation. The Honorable Edward McDowell. Mayor Pro Temp.
Whereas each year, communities across our nation observe National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the history, culture, and contributions of generations of Hispanic Americans whose ancestors came from Mexico, Spain, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas, the observations started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 from September 15th to October 15th due to the fact that this window represents Independence Day in seven Latin American countries: Chile, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Colombia, Honduras, Mexico, and Nicaragua. And whereas, we acknowledge the challenges to obtain equity and opportunities that many Hispanics and minority groups still face in our nation, and rededicate ourselves to creating a vibrant and inclusive society where everyone may succeed and give access to the public and to the path of success and prosperity. Now therefore, I, Daniel J. Rickaman, Mayor of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Columbia and encourage all citizens of this community to observe and take part in the activities recognizing the contributions of Hispanics to the cultural life of our city, state, nation, and world. Amen. Organizations, of course, in attendance to receive the Hispanic Heritage Month Proclamation: Tanya Rodriguez Hodges, the Executive Director and Supporting Staff; South Carolina Coalition Against Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault; Language Access and Human Trafficking Survivor Coordinator; Paso Maria Martin, Executive Director; and the South Carolina Commission for Minority Affairs, Alex Tovold, Hispanic Latino Program Coordinator. Would you all please come forward, please? Please. Oh, come on, take a picture. Want us to go with you?
Yeah.
So, thank you so much to City Council and to the excellent acknowledgement of our ever-growing Hispanic Latino population here in South Carolina and in our beautiful Midlands. Columbia is the home of over 17 languages, I mean, countries that speak Spanish, and in that, we have grown exponentially over the last two decades, bringing our totality closer to 10%. And we are one of the fastest-growing cities and states that are honored to move to South Carolina because of the ever-lovely temperatures and also the hospitable people of this great state and our wonderful city. So, thank you so much on behalf of our nonprofit organization, Latino Communications, our staff, and the others that are here today. We simply just wanted to say thank you so very much from the bottom of our hearts for acknowledging our magnificent contributions that we have made to our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all you do for our city and for this organization. Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you all. Item three, National Code Compliance Month Proclamation. The Honorable Edward H. McDowell Jr., Mayor Pro Temp.
Whereas code enforcement officers provide for the safety and welfare of the citizens throughout the United States through the enforcement of local codes or ordinances facing various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental health, and life, and safety. Whereas code enforcement officers often have a challenging and demanding role and oftentimes do not receive recognition for the job that they do in improving lives and working closely with residents and businesses of local communities. And whereas, the American Association of Code Enforcement do recognize and honor code enforcement officers and professionals all across the United States and bring awareness of the importance of code enforcement in the communities of the United States. And whereas, the American Association of Code Enforcement was established in 1988 for the purpose of providing ongoing training and support for code enforcement professionals working in the United States. Now therefore, I, Daniel J. Rickaman, Mayor of the City of Columbia, along with my fellow members of Columbia City Council, do hereby proclaim this day and honor and recognize the month of October 2022 as National Code Enforcement Month. David, would you please come forward? You notice when Daniel's here, we don't get a picture. Head's a man of the people.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp and City Council. I didn't prepare a presentation, but I do want to acknowledge that we are humbled by this certificate, and we appreciate everything that council and city management does for us. And we enjoy our job, we enjoy what we do. So, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
Mr. Mayor Pro Temp. I think there are several of my colleagues want to say something to David.
Uh-oh.
Councilwoman Herbert, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I am so thankful for the entire team and the patience that you have, particularly with my district and me being new and learning different things. Me and David, I think, David, we got a real love thing going on these days. But I appreciate the patience, I appreciate the positive responses that I get from people as well when you all come out and assist them. And so, I just want to make sure I say that I'm personally thankful, and I will continue to help in any way that I can. And y'all keep up the good work.
Thank you. Mr. Duval.
I'd like to say ditto to Councilwoman Herbert's remarks, but I'd also like to tell the public that we have something like 117 organized neighborhood groups in the city of Columbia, and the at-large people get to go to a lot of them, and we always have the code enforcement person there. So, these people not only do the work during the day, they are out at night at the neighborhood meetings, listening to what the neighborhoods have to say about code enforcement, getting a long list of to-dos out of those meetings, and I appreciate the time that you put in, you all put in for code enforcement for the city. Thank you.
Dr. Bustles.
Just wanted to echo that. Your work is incredibly important in making sure that our city represents what we value, which is a city that's vibrant and safe. And I just want to thank you all for being willing to be flexible with this new council and working really hard to address some of the challenges that we hear from our constituents, and just know that we really appreciate and notice the hard work that your team is doing.
Thank you so much, David.
Thank you.
Your work... Where are all the officers? Oh, they got to get back to work.
Can't do this without them.
Look, you are my best friend, and of course, I'm sure all of us around this dais know that code enforcement not only helps residents within our city, but also helps each one of us to understand some of the codes and some of the violations, helping folk to get through some of the things that they ask. And we are thankful for you and for your leadership. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, council, and thank you, David, and the whole team. We know how much we appreciate you. Item four, the National Community Planning Month Proclamation. The Honorable Edward H. McDowell Jr., Mayor Pro Temp.
Whereas change is constant and affect all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas, community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work, live, work and live. And whereas, the month of October is designed as National Community Planning Month through the United States of America and its territories. And whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us an opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the Planning Commission and other citizens planning who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Columbia. And whereas, we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional, community, and regional planners of the city of Columbia, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Therefore, I, Daniel J. Rickaman, Mayor of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, along with my fellow council members of Columbia, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Community Planning Month in the city of Columbia in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. Krista, you going to come? Who else is going to come, Krista?
So, just a quick thank you for this recognition. We are a small but mighty staff. I would encourage you to look at our recent annual report to show what this staff has done. The accomplishments are remarkable between annexation, bike pad, historic preservation, you name it, we're doing it with these wonderful folks. So, thank you very much for the recognition.
Thank you, Krista. Mr. Brennan?
Yeah, Krista, I just wanted to say, Krista, to your team, not just a busy year, how about a busy two, three, four years, Columbia Compass, everything that you've done to take us to the path to grow the city in a smart way. And I want to say thank you to your staff for that. It's, you know, explaining, zoning, ordinances, planning, it's tough to do it via email. So, thank you for carving out time to meet with all of us individually. And I know as new council members come on board, that is a fresh tutorial to learn everything that you do day in and day out. So, we're very appreciative of everything you've done and where we're going with your vision. So, thank you so much.
Ms. Herbert.
I was just going to say, you know, I got my, I think my first experience with the city of Columbia was DDRC, and so I started learning all of these things that I knew nothing about. And so, I love watching the group and the things that I've learned and how you all plan so well and help us preserve. That's always been the interesting thing, historical homes and businesses and so forth. So, I'm just glad to see you all and see some familiar faces that have been here since way back when. I won't say when that was, but way back when.
Mr. Duval.
I'd like to echo what my comrades have said, but I'd also like to add, we should have had this in the opposite order. We should have had the community planning department before we had the code enforcement, because it's the planning that lays the groundwork of a beautiful city, and it's the code that keeps it beautiful. So, thank you for what you do on your half of the process and your wonderful staff, all the things they do.
Krista, thank you very, very much, especially when you get a frantic call from me calling you or asking about something, and you are, in your own way, very calm and collected. Thank you so much. So, in my frenzy to try to get a question answered, you answer those things. Thank you and your team for being who you are and who's you are. Thank you very much. Thank you.
We appreciate you, Krista, and the whole team. Thank you. Moving forward, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp to the...
There are no more presentations.
Well, you know, I wasn't going to say, but you really know how to pull off these photo ops with your colleagues.
Well, we hadn't done that in a long time, and I thought it'd be good that we do it again.
I'll have to tell the mayor.
Thank you, team. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Wilson?
We are at the point for the consent agenda items five through 22.
All right.
I move approval of the consent agenda items five through 22.
Is there a second? It moved and seconded that we approve agenda items consent calendar five through 22. Are there any questions?
I'd just like to make a comment and thank the staff for item number five, identifying ways in which we can allow the water staff to benefit from some of the services that the nonprofit provides. And so, I appreciate y'all making those connections and helping make it very clear why this is being funded in the way that it is.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for bringing that to our attention, too, Dr. Bustles.
All right. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Taylor, Ms. Herbert...
Aye.
Dr. Bustles...
Aye.
Mr. Brennan...
Yes.
Mr. McDowell...
Yes.
Mr. Duval...
Aye.
Thank you.
And Ms. Herbert, I think Ms. Herbert also had those ideas for the staff. Thank you both, ladies. Item 23, we're holding...
We're going to defer that until the mayor gets here.
Yes, sir.
All right.
And so, the second ordinance for second reading is item 24, ordinance number 2022-012, a 15th supplemental ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of City of Columbia, South Carolina Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Bonds and one or more series in the aggregate principal amount of not exceeding $85 million in order to finance various capital projects and improvements to the system, any necessary debt service reserves, capitalized interest and issuance costs, authorizing the mayor, the city manager, and the assistant city manager for finance and economic services, or any two of them acting together to determine certain matters with respect to the bonds, prescribing the form and details of such bonds and other matters relating thereto. This first reading approval was given on March the 1st, 2022, and our CFO and assistant city manager, Mr. Jeff Palin, has sent council the backup information to refresh your memory on the purpose of why this second reading is coming forward now. We've also, as requested, included the attorney estimated cost for the issuance as listed for the co-bond counsel and tax counsel, Burr Foreman, Michael Seazin, Ryan Gentry, John Nason, and Jeff Allen, at $197,500. The co-bond counsel, Johnson Toll, Batiste George Johnson, $80,000. Co-underwriters counsel, Parker Poe, Mr. Ray Jones, Emily Luther, and Emily Zekon, $100,000. And the co-underwriters counsel starts law, F. Xavier, starts at $40,000.
Okay, item number 24 is before you.
I move approval of item 24 to the amount of $85 million for water sewer bonds.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded, item number 24. Are there further questions? If not, clerk, Ms. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Taylor...
Aye.
Ms. Herbert...
Aye.
Dr. Bustles...
Aye.
Mr. Brennan...
Yes.
Mr. McDowell...
Yes.
Mr. Duval...
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right. Madam City Manager?
Yes, sir, thank you. Ordinance is first reading. Item 25 is ordinance number 2022-082, amending the 1998 Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter 11, Licenses, Permits, and Miscellaneous Business Regulations to Add Article 13, Purveyors of Cannabis Products. This item has come forward from the Economic and Community Development Committee with a recommendation for approval.
It's Public Safety Committee.
I'm sorry, it should have been the Public Safety Committee. My apologies. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yes, sir. Item 26 should also be a Public Safety Committee recommendation as well.
Yeah, both are, yeah, both 25 and 26 are Public Safety.
Mr. Mayor Pro Temp?
Yes, sir.
I move approval of item 26, and I'll ask Mr. Taylor to explain the purpose of this particular ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Duval. What we're doing here is an ordinance that requires the sellers of THC and cannabis products...
products to post warning signs equal to 50% of the size of the signs selling the product, warning the consumers that this product may possibly cause you to fail workplace drug test. We're just seeing tragedy after tragedy, because these are legal products with unintended consequences of people failing drug tests, losing their jobs. It's a detriment to employers who are losing good employees over this, and I just think it's our duty as citizens to warn our folks that there's a downside to be wary of when you consume.
Thank you.
I'll answer any questions if anybody has any.
Let me get a, let me, before we go any further, let's get, you did move that, didn't you, Howard? That was not a second, or did I? I didn't hear it. You want it?
It sounded like he moved item 26. You may have meant 25, but if you could just restate the motion, that would be helpful.
I move approval of item number 25, which is the cannabis products signs.
Second.
Mr. Taylor will second.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there, is there any further conversation, questions? Thank you, Mrs. Taylor, for that. Any other questions? All right, if you would approve that, Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bussles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 26, under resolutions, resolution number R2022-074, resolving to consider ordinance number 2022-081, amending the 1998 Code of Ordinances, Chapter 17, Unified Development Ordinance, Article 4, Use Regulations, Section 17, 4.2, Principal Uses to Add Provisions Governing Smoke or Vape Shops, and Article 9, Definitions and Measurements to Add Definitions Concerning Smoke or Vape Shops, and Setting and Advertising to the Public the Date of a Public Hearing on this ordinance, and referring this ordinance to the Planning Commission for its consideration, and invoking the Pending Ordinance Doctrine with respect to this ordinance. Again, this resolution is coming forth out of the Public Safety Committee recommendate, recommended for approval.
Mr. Duval? Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, you will note that this is a resolution instead of an ordinance. The reason that is, is that the change that will be made to implement the restriction on the location of vape shops and others that are covered by this particular ordinance has to be part of the zoning laws, and it goes through the Planning Commission. So, we're asking you to approve this resolution, 2022-074, today, and we will invoke what they call the Pending Ordinance Doctrine. In other words, once we pass this resolution today, our staff will be instructed not to do anything to be against this particular ordinance when it is finally passed. It's a pending ordinance. In other words, the will of the council is that these shops fall under the ordinance as it comes back to us from the Planning Commission, and I move adoption of Resolution 074.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, been moved and seconded. Are there any other questions? Now, Howard, just one, just one observation. Does this come back to the Public Safety Committee, or does it come back to the council?
It'll come back to council as a recommendation from the Planning Commission.
All right, okay. Any other observations? Any other questions? Madam Clerk, if you would, call a roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bussles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number R2022-083, approving the planting of a tree and placement of a plaque at the southwest corner of the South Carolina Crime Victims Memorial Garden and Path of Remembrance in the Riverfront Park South parking lot in remembrance of Officer Roy Andrew Drew Barr Jr.
Motion to approve.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Are there further questions? If not, Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bussles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Event Resolutions, item 28, resolution number 2022-051, authorizing consumption of beer and wine beverages only at the South Carolina Pride Festival on Friday, October the 14th, 2022, and Saturday, October the 15th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Is it? All right, been moved and seconded. Are there further questions? If not, Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bussles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Thank you.
Public comment on a road closure. Again, this item 29, the closure of Bowling Springs Court, is simply for city council to receive public comment on the closing of this property with no further action taken at this time.
Our particular intent as it relates to this item is to hear from the public. There has not been, will not be a vote taken referencing the closing of this, of this street, this court. What we're hearing today and what we want to hear today is input from the public. Are there persons here that would like to speak referencing the closing of Spring Court? Hearing none?
No one signed in to speak.
All right, hearing none. Ms. Wilson, if you would, proceed.
Yes, sir. I wanted to do the city manager's report, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, when Mayor Rickaman was here, but I can go ahead and proceed if you would prefer.
Would you like to hold?
Unless you all have any other committee referrals, reports, or new business you'd like to take up.
Would you, would you, you all like to hold that until the mayor gets here? I understand he'll be here shortly.
It really does lead into items 31 through 35, though, so for the sake of time, I mean, he's aware, and if you prefer for me to continue, I can.
Okay. All right. We're comfortable with that? Let's go with that, Ms. Wilson.
I'm gonna go ahead. Okay, sure. Well, I'm gonna have our General Services Director, Mr. Kelvin Kiesler, join me for the manager's report. I'm sorry, I'm in a task. You have a PowerPoint today for the reports. Sorry. They always give me a dead one. We wanted today to take some particular time with all of the great work that's been going on with our new initiative and program, the Rapid Shelter Columbia, to give council a little bit more detail. During Dr. Bussles, as the chairwoman of the Task Force to Prevent and End Homelessness, the last task force meeting, we shared some of these slides, and I wanted to make sure I shared them with all of council. I think they've even been updated since then, Kelvin. I really just have to say publicly, I don't know, after all these years, I'm still sometimes amazed by our staff. They, the talent and the skill sets on the City of Columbia's team, it's really quite remarkable, and I think you'll agree with me when you see some of these pictures, what we've been able to do in just a matter of a very few weeks, as you all know, with the transformational decision you made to move forward with Rapid Shelter Columbia. So, with that, the first slide is just a discussion outline slide. We're gonna take you through a few views of the construction update in advance, one, Kelvin, and then we'll go through a program update, which is just a brief slide or two on staffing, partner contracts for our operations, and wraparound services, and then I'll talk a little bit about next steps to include operating guidelines and establishing program goals, short term and long term. But, again, I will hand off to Kelvin. I think this is a great opportunity, too, for our public to begin to see the transformation of and what we're working towards for Rapid Shelter Columbia. You all know the history of the pallet shelters, with the pallet shelter organization we're working with, and Kelvin's just giving you another photo of that, which we have shared with the council previously, but for the public's benefit, Kelvin.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, city council. Ms. Wilson, thank you for letting us come here and talk about pallet shelters and what we're doing at the emergency shelter site. So, on September 7th, we had the press conference onsite, which kickstarted our shelter process. We started site clearing right after that press conference. On September 7th and 8th, they, our public works group, like Ms. Wilson said, we worked with some of the best here at the City of Columbia. We had the site cleared in, in my opinion, record time. This is not, yeah. Here we go.
Kevin, can I hold, could you stop for just one second? One or two of us doesn't have. You got it on yours? You have it on yours, Joe?
There you go.
Oh, the iPads.
Yeah, the iPad. Okay. Does everyone have this on your iPads?
We got it down there soon.
All right. Thank you. All right, Kevin, I'm sorry.
So, on September 12th, we completed the site clearing there at the shelter. If you could advance next slide.
One more.
Yeah, one more, please. So, September 13th, we started grading the site to get it ready for all the underground work that had to take place. Advance the slide, please.
Get hers.
And on September 12th, we had Dominion onsite putting in our electrical service and setting the new transformer. That's a picture to the far right. Then on September 19th, we were rough graded the site. We had the gutter installation going on the side of the building and storm drain work on September the 20th. September 22nd, we've completed the storm drain, and we had the electrical service installed. And then on September 29th, right before Hurricane Ian, we were able to get the electrical in place, and we had Dominion back onsite, and we were able to get the meters installed as well prior to Hurricane Ian arriving on. And that was really critical for us, and we were a little afraid that Dominion would have gotten pulled away, so we wanted to make sure we got them out there onsite and got that taken care of. Next slide. As you're familiar, this is the pallet shelter site. This is located at 191 Calhoun. Next slide, please. So, our construction schedule is as follows. We have September 7th with the press conference, we had the site clearing. September 19th through the 15th, we completed our engineering drawings and storm drainage plan. September 12th through the 14th, we'll be completing the site grading, storm drain installation, the electrical installation, and moving right along into the Dominion Energy, that being completed on September 13th. September 7th, the site preparation work will be complete. We'll have sidewalk insulation, which will start next Monday, October 10th through the 17th. Followed right behind that will be some artificial turf that we'll be putting down between these shelters, so we don't keep the weeds and all that down. It'll be easy cleanup and help us with drainage as well at the site. Then on October 24th through the 28th, we'll have pallet shelters arriving here onsite with the anchoring and the electrical connections to those shelters, October 26th through the 28th, with a tentative opening of November 1st for our Rapid Shelter Columbia. Next slide, please. So, this is a look at when pallet arrives. Their staff are gonna arrive October 23rd. They'll arrive in Columbia, South Carolina. They'll have, October 24th, their, the units will arrive here at 191 Calhoun, and they'll start the unloading process. They'll also have staff prepared to train approximately six to eight lead individuals. These lead individuals will lead like small crews that will be installing these shelters. On October 25th, the team leaders will supervise a crew of between four to five volunteers, and we'll be installing the shelters. They'll continue that work on October 26th, and on October 26th, we'll also start the anchoring and installation of the electrical components there. On October 27th, we'll have the final installation items, that's completing the inside of the units, making sure all anchoring systems are tied down, all electricals completed, and we'll, again, continue and finalize that on October 28th.
Does council have any questions while Kelvin is still up regarding the construction timeline? We are, have made a formal request for volunteers, a very formidable partner we have here in Columbia, so I'll wait until they are able to formally accept, but it takes about an hour with using this structure with four to five volunteers with each crew to put together a unit, and so, we're very, we're very hopeful that this is gonna get done in record time. Yes, sir.
Well, Ms. Wilson, very nice job, and I think you've communicated to me, but I just want to confirm that our camera system that we use citywide, would be in place on this, on the, on the entranceways and things like that? I just think that's very reassuring for the public to know.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you for that reminder, Mr. Taylor. I didn't want us to mention that. Kelvin, you want to speak to the 29 cameras or so that we're putting down there?
Yeah, so, we got 20x, 26 cameras that are planned. We have three additional that we'll probably go back and add based on police's recommendation. So, it'll be 29 total cameras is what we're looking at on the site. That will be inside of the buildings, not inside the pallet shelters, but inside 191, the overflow shelter units, and the rest of the cameras will be outside. We met with the fiber installation folks today. They're actually running those lines down there for us, so we'll have all that in place by November 1st.
Where will the fiber terminate?
So, it's gonna terminate at 191 Calhoun, right in front of the building. We have a pedestal that, right out front.
Let me ask it the other way. Who do you hook to on the fiber?
So, we were able to, we had some extra fiber at the canal water treatment plant. We're gonna pull that fiber back and pull it over, so it'll be on city.
Okay.
Okay?
Very nice.
Any other questions?
Well, you know, part of our, a part of our conversation, I think, Mr. Taylor raised that issue, and that was the cameras and how important that is as we continue this journey, making sure that that is locked down. I mean, it's gonna be a very critical part of what that pallet community is gonna look like and what the advantages that we could have with a real good camera system and having it pointed in the right direction.
Absolutely. We worked with Director Tinsley and with Police Department as far as location of cameras. We're also adding site lighting as well in this location, so we'll have a lot of light there onsite, and, again, 29 cameras is what we're looking at.
All right. Speaking of which, we putting street lights and we'll, we'll light it up down that access road?
Yeah, so, there, currently, there's Dominion lights there now. There's a few that are not working. We're gonna make contact with those, those hosts to get those in place, but we're gonna have lighting on our site as well.
Perfect.
And off of our buildings.
Perfect, thank you very much.
And we'll be able to monitor the cameras, I think, as Mr. Taylor was making that point about our new system, so the cameras will be able to be monitored from the EOC. Of course, we are also, I'll talk about this, well, I'll just say it now, for a security management standpoint, the chief and his team are in, they're finishing up interviews with three vendors, so we'll have a specific contract for security services that will come before council, probably on October 18th. But, definitely putting an emphasis on security and safety and lighting is very important. Thank you, Kelvin.
Thank you.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank you all in terms of how aggressively you've been able to get some of this started and excited to see it come to light. City Manager Wilson, a question about November 1st. I know that is the day, and as you know, we're already getting questions about ways in which to sign up or engage with these shelters. When the time is appropriate, is that something that you all can share? I'm assuming, you know, it'll align with the folks that we're hiring.
Yes, ma'am, exactly, and so, I'll just go into that a week in advance. So, the next slide. The three positions that are being recruited, again, is what you all have previously referred to as the czar, and I, we formally named the Director of Homeless Services, the Homeless Services Project- aggressively, but lots of great interest, lots of great candidates. We are finishing up that process this week for the Director and the Project Manager. And I look forward to bringing them onboard very, very soon, leading up to November 1st. Part of their responsibilities will be to assist with establishing guidelines for Rapid Shelter Columbia, rules, regulations, dignity standards that we will have to follow and we will have expectations that the individuals we serve adhere to. And as part of that process, what I've learned as we've been working on this, and I sent you all an email in this regard, this isn't a situation where we can flip a switch and, you know, we're going it alone. It was never intended to be that. But what it is, is the city now being in a position of making sure we are holding ourselves accountable and the providers that we work with for making sure we can address the outcomes and strategies that council has outlined when it comes to the unsheltered population in particular. And I think what has become apparent to me, that while we had a very capable third party who was working as a coordinator for homeless services for the city, doing a good job, we as the city proper had not been immersed and, and we needed to sort of remove that middleman, so to speak. And so it's been a lot of work. We're learning a lot of things, but I think there's been some issues of capacity for some of our providers, the street outreach, the after-hours issues, the fact that we've needed more individuals, really. We just needed to ramp up this situation. This rapid shelter and the pods is just a tool in the toolbox. Nobody's saying it's going to solve every problem. It's another tool for some of the individuals who maybe have not done well with the congregate setting. And so this non-congregate setting will be in place where we traditionally have the Inclamant Weather Center, we'll have that operating 365 days a week. Yes, Dr. Bussles will be finalizing how we identify candidates. I don't anticipate we'll have all 50 pods on November 1st filled. I think that would be very ambitious, but I do anticipate that we'll have several filled and we're working with transitions and the other providers to help us identify those individuals that would do well out the gate to get a pod. And so once we get the Director onboard and the Project Specialist, they will be working hand in hand with our providers to identify those folks. It's not, you know, I wouldn't sit here and say that we're soliciting people to give us feedback. I, I think we know this population and we know who we're going to be seeking as good candidates to possibly have a pod. In addition, the overflow, which is the, as Kelvin showed you a minute ago, where the traditional Inclamant Weather Center has been housed, those Butler Buildings, will still be used the same way for the Inclamant Weather nights when it's 40 degrees or below, then that facility will be open for individuals that need to come there. And that's how we think we need to start, is we have worked with transition staff and other providers. We want to make sure that their locations are still utilized as well. And we want to make sure that the 50 individuals or so that we're rolling through the pods are getting that wraparound services so we can move them into a more permanent situation. It would be very difficult to do that and at the same time have the op, the overflow center open all day long. You don't want to have, you know, that kind of mix of environment behaviors while you're trying to make a lot of positive progress with those individuals with some intensive case management. The other thing I was going to say, because this leads into the contracts that are on your agenda, is that we have needed to, for continuity of services. And honestly, we're talking about three shifts of house managers, house assistants, shift workers, that transitions has always used to operate the overflow center. We still need them to do that. We need to replicate that same amount of staff, thereabouts, to also operate on the pod side. So we've been working with them to make sure we are staffed up and there is a, there's a population of people who have the skillset to do this and they've traditionally done that and they've traditionally been contracted through transitions. And so we want to utilize and make sure we're able to still get these individuals to come and work on both sides of Rapid Shelter Columbia. So all of that's been going on, we're sorting it all out. We are utilizing them to hi, help us hire through contractual arrangements, case managers that will be there every day for the Rapid Shelter pod side. And we're utilizing them to also, thank you, work with us to hire the staff, as I mentioned, case managers, house managers, house assistants for both the pods and the overflow piece. So it's quite a lot of activity to get all of these folks staffed 24 hours a day, three different shifts, but that's what, what we're working on right now. Trying to think of Pam or Missy if I'm missing anything, because there's a lot of moving parts. We'll then begin to use our three staff persons at the top to also begin to schedule clinicians and providers to be onsite during the day so that we are bringing the services to the individuals that will be there all the time at the pods. Salvation Army doing the meals still, that was what they've always done. So it's just, again, the city is now going direct with these providers versus having a middle person doing this for us. And it's been enlightening, I must say. It's been very interesting, very enlightening to understand on a deeper level what all is involved here. We need to bring transportation services back as well, but the comment has already committed that they'll continue to provide that service.
Great, Mr. Duval. Madam City Manager, the, I've had a few calls about the pods. I think there's a misconception that this, this will be their house for as long as they want to stay there. The, the theory that we're using is it'll be a temporary house until we can get the wraparound services to get them into a full, permanent program.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right. And I, and I do think that going into this, I probably myself thought, oh, within a week to 14 days, we'd be able to move individuals? That might be a bit ambitious because as you all are also working on and Councilwoman Herbert is leading the effort with Affordable Housing Task Force, there's, and the providers have reaffirmed this, there's just not the housing stock at the affordable or attainable rate for some of these individuals. There's a lot to this. You've got to make sure that they have stable jobs to be able to then get housing that is permanent. So one of the other approaches we're looking at, again, through transitions, they have a tiered approach where they move people to a more permanent type arrangement at transitions. Some of them may be better candidates because they're about to move into, they may have gotten a job. And so if we need to sort of move someone from a pod to the second or third tier at transitions or vice versa, we've been looking at how that might work. But yes, sir, you're exactly right. It is not meant to be permanent. It is meant, though, that we want to move people when they're in a good place to be moved so that we try to stop the cycle, 50 people at a time, so to speak. And we think as, you know, a lot of it's going to be trial and error. I don't want anyone to think this is like magic and we've figured it all out, but it is a good valiant effort to try to do something a little bit differently, see if we can move people and meet them where they are, and particularly if they're good candidates for not being in that congregate environment. But it's probably more like 30 days to 45 days maybe for some before they're able to find a permanent spot.
Ms. Wilson, I, just before we clarify something, because I, I want to make sure I didn't have a misunderstanding, and I think you touched on it at the end. I mean, one of the reasons we're doing the pods is because, you know, a lot of this came out of dealing with our chronic unsheltered homeless that would refuse to go into a, a domitories type, type deal. So I'm just going to guess that our first priority on the pods are to get those people, as the Police Department described to me one time, and I thought it was pretty good, pretty good description, that we have somewhere 800 homeless folks in Columbia, 200 are unsheltered, 50 cause the vast majority of the issues. And this really, I thought the concept was to make sure, Mr. Duval, it's not that, so people understand that it's a, it's a, it's a new home. It's a place for us to get that person that's causing the issues on the street, off the street, until we can get them to the, to the, whether it's mental health, drug services or whatever, you know, is that correct? I just want to make sure.
That, that is correct. You know, obviously, Mr. Taylor, some folks, depending on what kind of problems they're causing on the street, we don't also want them to cause them at the pods. And so there's going to be a balance we have to strike about identifying the people who are going to be successful in the pods. And those are some of the things that we've been working through. So to the point made earlier about who, who may get a pod coming out the gate, yeah, we know the people that we're targeting to get them and who would be successful there.
Well, let me just take into discussion one step further then. I mean, you know, today, many times when our police officers encounter a homeless person on the street, whether or not they're disruptive or, or just dealing with issues, it seems like if it's after five or on Saturday or Sunday, our officers basically only have two choices, walk on or I'll take you to jail.
Correct.
The purpose of what we're doing here is to remove the walk-on option. It's rapid housing or incarceration. I mean, and that we're just not going to be, it gives us the opportunity to no longer leave folks facing issues on the street.
That's right.
And I just want to make sure that we're always reserved and backed, and I realize this is an operational question, it's down the road, it doesn't need to be answered today, but just want to be on the record saying I hope we always have reserve, you know, X number of pods.
They're reserved. They're reserved.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am.
They're reserved. I, I won't get into the details of that, but yes, sir, we, that has definitely been addressed.
Well, there's a lot, Mayor. There's a lot of things we've got to work out.
That's right.
No question about that. And I think the prevailing question that I've received, and I think my colleagues have probably, probably got similar questions, and that question is, are we providing permanent housing? And the thing that I've said, and I think the colleagues have also said, that no, this is not permanent housing. This is a step towards getting better. And out of that comes a new journey somewhere else. So I think, I think while there are numerous and various things that we need to do, primarily and most importantly, those issues that, whether it's, I mean, the whole nine yards, there's a lot of questions and a lot of concerns that we just need to thrust through and make sure that they're fleshed out in such a way that it happens.
Yes, sir, absolutely. And, you know, I'll take this opportunity too on the record to implore, I know Councilman Brennan has had some conversations, that we continue the conversations with Department of Mental Health, the Crisis Stabilization Unit. I've, I've mentioned that multiple times when we've had these conversations, that's a very, it's another key aspect, because some individuals also need that immediate attention. And so to have that unit, to have this effort going on, I think you really start making some progress here moving forward, once we start standing up these various tools in our toolbox. So we're looking forward to seeing that stabilization unit in the Midlands get stood up as well.
I had a question, Ms. Wilson. I guess in the next three to six months, I know that we're looking at the Rapid Shelter Columbia site will be open 24/7?
Or starting November the 1st is the goal, to launch that, that part with the pods? Yes, ma'am. That would be the 24/7 Rapid Shelter component simultaneously from November 1st through, I think, the end of March, or maybe it's March 1st. We would have the overflow for the Inclamant Weather nights. So any night that it's 40 degrees or below, start in November 1st as well.
Okay. And so I'm just curious, just so I'm clear, what kind of activities do you anticipate will be going on during the daytime throughout this? And especially in the beginning of the process? Because I'm trying to figure out, are folks who are using the pods, do they get to stay there 24/7? Or do they, you know, come and go? What kind of structure do you look to see with that?
So just as soon as I possibly can get these individuals hired, we're starting those conversations already, but that would, that's going to be one of the tasks.
Something, okay.
Is that they're going to be scheduling, for example, we need to have the DMV come one day, Department of Veterans Affairs, you know, different health services, mental health counselors, all the different wraparound services. We will schedule certain days, it's the thought process. And we're looking at other cities that have done this, that pallet shelter is recommended as well. But again, that was why it was so key for us to keep a certain amount of continuity with our providers. We need them, we need all of them to work with us through this and be able to now come to this one location where these individuals are. And we schedule the time on certain days of the week and we'll get in a good rhythm. We haven't worked all of those details out yet, what that looks like for, you know, we obviously not keeping any, holding anybody captive, but we will have rules and regulations about when people, you know, must be back in place, because we also have to organize dinner service and breakfast service for the overflow individuals on that night that is working. And the Salvation Army is well equipped to do this, we've talked about it. So we're literally in the weeds right now. You know, breakfast will be served for overflow at this time. Breakfast will be served for the pods, folks who are living onsite at, you know, staggered times. Then we'll have lunch just for individuals in the pods and all the other activities with the service providers will be going on during the day. And then we'll have dinner staggered for those individuals coming for Inclamant Weather Night and a set time for those in the pods. You know, I don't know if Kelvin pointed it out, but they're looking at a communal area as well, where the votes and the pods would be able to gather, you know, have activities, recreational type things to do. So we're trying to get it all done.
Mayor, Ms. Wilson, how doable would it be as we continue this journey and push forward for the general public to have, is, could there perhaps be a question, an answer, something that the general public wants? For an example, when would breakfast be served? Low-hanging fruit kind of questions.
Yes, sir.
That might give the general public a better view and a better, better understanding of what Rapid Shelter is all about.
Well, I think some FAQs that we get posed, facts about the Rapid Shelter Columbia. Now, you all who've worked with me the longest know I, I like to wait till we really have it in more, you know, concrete and detail. I know a lot of it's still going to be fluid, but you're exactly right. I think we can put that out. I know that Dr. Bussles is working with the task force on the strategies and outcomes, so I think that's another great document that'll be posted. So I envision us having a prominent place on the website where we can post these different things. We're also working on a database, because we've had lots of individuals asking, you know, to volunteer to drop off welcome packages and baskets and food. And all of that is appreciated and welcome, we're just not quite at the point to receive on it yet. But we want to have a place where people can, we can capture those individuals who want to assist.
Sure. But when that time comes.
Absolutely, we'll do that.
With the help of Dr. Bussles and other members perhaps of the task force and, of course, our colleagues, to sort of put together that kind of document.
Yes, sir.
To sort of help clarify what this whole, what, what Rapid Shelter is all about.
Yes, I, I'm glad you're saying that. I mean, two of the things that I keep getting are, and people don't mean anything by it, but referring to them as tiny homes, and we're trying not to refer to them as that because that's not really what it is. I know it looks similar, but it is not meant to be a permanent home. It's a pod that is definitely dignified and provides all the safe, secure and necessary things for an individual. And I think there's another misconception, oh, about the, the 40 degrees or below per night is when the overflow kicks in on those particular nights.
Mayor, can I? So as you were talking, and this is very helpful.
night is when the overflow kicks in on those particular nights.
Mayor, can I, um, so as you were talking, and this is very helpful, I think one of the things we should put on our list of, uh, things to discuss with the new staff members is making sure that we have a infrastructure or some sort of incentive structure built in place so that those experiencing homelessness chronically know that this is not a permanent solution, right? Um, and that requires placing a little bit of trust and pressure on our provider partners, but also, um, you know, something that I think City Council can certainly help with is making sure that our state and regional partners buy into this program as well. So I will be asking all of my colleagues to, um, help me in advocating for some of these pieces to make sure we can really keep this what it is, which is, it is a rapid, short-term solution for a long-term problem. So just thinking through some of those things, because it sounds like it, it's going to be a amazing environment, um, that's really focused on being trauma-informed and with, uh, dignity involved. Um, and I could see why folks would be like, I like it. I, I don't want to, I don't want to leave. And there's so many people we have to serve. So really thinking about different triaging and, um, thinking about ways in which we can leverage existing, um, providers and programs, I think will be really important. And we can go back to some of the ideas that the task force, uh, produced. And then as I was looking at the, um, the staffing and, and thinking about this as a whole, I know this may not be the right time, but I would love if down the road we could have the Economic and Community Development Committee look at, really look closely at some of our CDBG drawlers that are focused on homelessness, because I'd like for us to eventually have some of those dollars support this work, um, and so that it's not all coming out of our general fund, right? Because there's lots of different priorities. And so I'd like to refer that discussion, um, as, you know, we, we get Rapid Shelter off the ground to explore next budget cycle, what some of that funding would look like and what would be appropriate.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more, Dr. Bustles. Okay. Thank you so much. We'll keep updating you all. Thank you for the support. Welcome, Mayor. I don't know if there are other committee referrals, reports. We've noted Dr. Bustles' referral there. And then item 36, um, is the Public Safety Committee, September 27th, 2022 report, the Honorable Howard DeValle, the, the Public Safety Committee Chief. Do you have a report, sir?
We do.
Okay.
We have, we have one item that we would like to report back up to the council for the next meeting of the council. That's, that's the fireworks ordinance. Uh, we have reviewed the fireworks ordinance and we think it's ready for primetime. So, uh, if you would get with legal and get a copy of that for our next council meeting.
Could you just briefly summarize what that is?
The fireworks ordinance is patterned after the ordinance that, um, Richland County is, is, um, looking at also. Well, I think we're a little bit further along than they are. Mainly it sets hours, uh, that you, you are permitted to have fireworks, uh, use fireworks in the city.
Okay.
And, Ms. Wilson, did you want to finish the committee things and then go back to the vote, or?
I can do that now. I'm sorry, that was my fault. I was on such a roll there with Rapid Shelter Columbia update. We do need, and I absolutely need for you approve the, or consider approval of consideration of agreements for Rapid Shelter Columbia, item 31. Council is asked to ratify an emergency procurement and approve a master product and services agreement for Rapid Shelter Columbia as requested.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Item 32, resolution number R.2022087, ratifying and authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement for the Housing First Program between the City of Columbia and the University of South Carolina for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Item 33, resolution number R.2022088, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement for the Rapid Shelter Columbia and Overflow Program between City of Columbia.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll? Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Item 34, resolution number R.2022089, authorizing the city manager to execute professional services agreement for the Rapid Shelter and Overflow Program between the City of Columbia and the Midlands Housing Alliance for fiscal year 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second, no discussion. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll? Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
And item 35, resolution number R.2022078, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Columbia and the Midlands Housing Alliance, Inc., for 2025 Main Street for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Motion to approve. Second.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor? Um, this is 2025 Main Street. I just want to clarify, that's the?
That's transitions.
This is transitions $325,000 contract, or is that something else?
Yes, sir, for the, um, security and operations piece.
And that does include a lot, new language about securing?
Correct.
I just want to affirm that?
Yes, sir.
For guests here?
Yes, sir, absolutely. It includes, um, additional language ensuring that the perimeter is monitored with security.
Monitored and prevent loitering, et cetera, et cetera.
And then, yes, prevent loitering, yes, sir. We, um, asked the chief himself and he was comfortable with the language and, yes, sir, absolutely.
It also includes, um, for the public's knowledge, that we have asked for transitions to submit, uh, the dollar amounts that other regional governments are giving them to get a better idea, um, and that they will, you know, put in a good faith effort to secure funding from Lexington and some neighboring entities as well.
We have a motion and a second. Any more further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll? Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you all for, for your attention to these matters. And I don't know if there are any additional referrals, committee referrals, reports, or new business?
I did have a referral, if there are no reports. No reports? Um, for the Economic and Community Development Committee wanted to refer two items, um, creative, um, options for food insecurity. And then the other one would be a report, and I don't know if they'll be able to do it by the next meeting, but, um, community development and the development corps specifically what they're doing, um, with housing and what the goals are for this current year.
You said from community development and the development corporations, Councilwoman?
Yes, ma'am.
And we have the additional item from Dr. Bustles regarding, um, just following up on HUD funding for Rapid Shelter as we go through the budget process.
Um, yes, sir. We did want to mention, I think we were asked to link the Economic Development Annual Plan, which was linked to the agenda for the public's consumption as requested. There are no other reports or new businesses. Moving back to item 23. This is an ordinance, second reading, an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance Off-Street Parking Standards as listed. Do you want me to read all of it?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I don't think, is there a motion? Is there a second? A motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll? Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
No.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, Mr. Mayor, we are now at the public input.
Mayor, we have Ms. Diane Wiley, followed by Susan McPherson, who have signed in to speak.
Ms. Wiley, good evening.
You're late.
Yes, ma'am. That's what happens when I try to put something on the schedule and not do it through Ms. Belt and I end up being in two places at, at the same time.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I just want to thank everybody for being here today and to the, uh, city manager and council and the mayor. We have an, uh, harvest time pop-up shop at Gunners Chapel Baptist Church in the Belvedere Community, 1631 Windover Drive, October 29th, 2022, 2022, at 12 to 5:00. We have, uh, for our kids, food vendors, bounce house games, and fellowship, trying to keep our neighborhood intact. But I want all of y'all to come and meet with you. Thank you. Just come in every now and then. But my issue is today is I want to thank Chief Holbrook and, uh, Sheriff Lot, he's not here, and Mr. McDowell, all the policemen, especially, uh, Lieutenant Ham, Ham, for helping us last Saturday. We had two, this is about the property, 3602, it's 3602, um, Thurman Street. We had two groups of people having cookouts. One was all the way from, uh, Rock Hill. How'd they get down here? They was going to party.
Did you invite them?
No, 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 no. I stayed out there. I stayed out there from 1:30 to 8:30. Mr. McDowell came, and I want to thank all the officers that they came, every hour on the hour. I was blowing up the phone. They was planning on having them a good time, but it didn't happen. It was quiet. I called the school district, they said that property is not theirs, it says you, you all, but we need cameras. I'm serious now, we had, we, Mr. McDowell was out there, wasn't you, Mr. McDowell?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Sir, I'm a lady.
I was there.
Okay. But, uh, they was getting ready to have a good time that, that night. So, uh, Lieutenant Ham went back out there at 10 o'clock to make sure they would leave. But we having serious problems. We had 159 calls on that property last month. That shouldn't be happening. They, they reported that in our neighborhood meeting. But if nothing don't be done, I will call, I tell the neighbors, call, 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 because you're going to get tired of calling. We need cameras out there. They having sex, they selling drugs, the homeless people out there. Man sleep in the little, in the little house. He come out there late. And the school is right there. That's every day. So we need help. But the school district, I talked to, uh, Mr. Pergans and Mr. Brown, and they said that it was you all property.
Well, I'm glad to know that. Now that we've clarified that for the public record, that's very helpful for us.
Yes. But, uh, we need help, Mayor. I, I started to call you too, next time I will.
And Ms. Wiley, I would expect you would.
Yeah, I was trying to give you a break, but I do wear, I wear his phone out.
Did you at least get some food from them while they were there?
Sir?
Did you at least get some barbecue or chicken from them?
No, I went and brought my own food. I don't, they offered me something, but I, I went and brought my own food, you know.
But we'll make sure that as, as, as we continue to look at this, but your information you just shared with us is very helpful. Thank you.
And I, I gave y'all some pictures. This is every day that's going on, every day.
Well, hopefully before long we can do something with that property like we've talked about and, and really make a, a nice improvement in the neighborhood.
You thought I was coming up here and fuss, but no. I'd like to say I don't let it go. I don't let it go.
That's good.
Because, you know, I was kind of mad one time. But Mr. McDowell, what'd you say?
Yes, ma'am, I know that.
I know I burn your phone up.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, I call you more than I call my husband.
Yes, well.
Always call him first.
But I'm, I'm serious, we do have some problems, y'all. You know, and if something happened, I'm going to say, didn't I tell you so? You know?
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, may I just say a word?
Yeah, absolutely.
Reference in that piece of property, there's still some conversation that we need to, uh, to have with Richland One, referencing an old document. I think the mayor is familiar with it. I think our city attorney has those documents. Uh, we have not done anything with those yet, with that document yet in terms of, uh, what's the next steps. So, um, we just need you to know that while it may be the district, um, it's not ours. Anyway.
The one is passing, but we need signs, because they, they think it's a party place. And the neighbors call, when they start calling me, I start calling them.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm going to call you next time.
Thank you.
But I'm, I'm, I'm a type person, I will work for, if you give me something to do, I'm going to do it. And I'm, I'm just like a little nerd. You know? I'm going to do it, you know? Ms. Tina, you know, I'm on my, I be on my job, you know? And underpaid.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley.
But I do it because I love what I do.
No, you love your neighborhood.
Yeah.
You love your neighborhood and we appreciate that.
Yeah. You thought I was going to fuss, but I just want y'all to know.
You don't fuss. I take every complaint as a compliment, because if you didn't care, you wouldn't be here.
Yeah, if everybody would come in here, neighborhood leaders, we could have this city looking good. But, you know, sometimes people be scared, but I'm not.
Good.
I'm not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. One of the interesting things, and I'm through, one of the interesting things about Ms. Wiley, of course, she has been out of her home since 2015, 2015, uh, working very diligently, trying to make sure that house on Web Court is, in one way or another, restored or either torn down and rebuilt again. But this family has been out of their house since 2015, and there needs to be a collaborative effort to make sure that, uh, we get this woman, uh, and her husband, who is confined to a wheelchair, in that, in their home again. We got to.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, Ms. McPherson is next. Yes, sir, thank you.
Greetings.
Hey, Susan.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I am Susan McPherson from the Columbia Chamber, and it is my pleasure to be here today. Um, first of all, I would like to commend all of y'all. You are doing such a tremendous job moving the City of Columbia forward from the chief to the planner to the enforcement, to all of these people. When we call with a question or concern from the business folks, y'all respond. Might not always be the answer they want, but I always give you credit because you respond very expeditiously, and we appreciate that. So today on behalf of the chamber, the board, our 1,200 partners throughout the City of Columbia, I just wanted to come in and say thank you very much for your work to remove the parking requirements. We think that this is going to be a tremendous help for moving the city forward for economic growth, to help out with our small businesses, and that's what the City of Columbia is about, is the growth of small business. And it also gives us an opportunity in those spaces where we are going to free up some of the parking spaces, that now we can create a better environment for our people to live, work, and play. So for that, we really thank you for that. We do not see where this is going to impact residential neighborhoods, and it's going to be a help again to our small businesses. So we appreciate your help there. And we also think that this is very supportive of your business-friendly initiatives that you've adopted and also with being open for business. So therefore, we appreciate that. We just wanted to come say thank you on behalf of the Columbia business community. We hear you, we're listening, and we thank you for working with all parties to come up with a meaningful resolution to that. So thank you. I also wanted to take one more minute while I'm up here and have the floor to say it is our distinct honor and pleasure to, on behalf of the business community, we are going to be honoring Chief Holbrook as the public servant of the year. And I can't tell you how deserving that is because I know you all agree with that. We have been through a lot of trying times over the last few years. Chief, you've worked very hard. I had the great pleasure and pride of being on the panel that interviewed from the community, that interviewed the chief. He came in, he had a mission and a plan. He has lived by that daily. So it's my distinct honor on behalf of the Chamber to say thank you so much. We'll see you on Thursday evening. So we appreciate all the good work that you're doing and your team. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, did we have anyone else sign up?
Yes, signed up, Mayor.
I did want to take a, a minute to remind everybody on Friday, that's October 7th, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, we are hosting our Breast Cancer Awareness Breakfast at Boyd Plaza. It's $10 a ticket. We look forward to seeing all of you there. We want to run out of food, bring your friends, your family, take your kids by there before you go to school. We look forward to, our goal is to raise $50,000 this month to put towards a new piece of equipment, to really compress the time that it takes for scanning and testing for our patients in our community. It's a great opportunity for us to come together. If we do reach the $50,000, I will be standing on Main Street in an all-pink suit, waving at everyone and thanking them for, so please come spend your dollars, come make your investment. You corporate folks who are out there listening, we look forward for you to also. Chamber will be looking for your donation as well. Since you're here, I want to thank those who have committed and we look forward to seeing everyone there. Hopefully my colleagues will be there serving meals as well from 7:00 to 9:00 AM on Friday morning.
Mr. McDowell will definitely be there.
Boyd Plaza.
Bright and early.
I'll be there.
You'll be there, 7:00 AM.